I'm ready for the call for me. Uh, the dinner night twenty twenty three. Uh, let's go and stand for the class. I want to take you to the block of the United States where. In six weeks, like we say, one eighty hundred individuals will literally teach us this problem. The meeting uh is gonna be a little bit different. We've got a superintendent here, Deena here, so we want you get to our presentation uh quickly as we can and get to do business, because I'll talk about possibility of the recreation commission and uh quicker go to report meetings. Uh, that's why we changed things around. So we'll go to consent agenda first, then second, issue of the delegating third, uh, the department heads, not a comment, still all the stuff, all the stuff. Uh, consent agenda. We have the claim ordinance and we have the approval of December twenty seventh city council meeting minutes.
Uh, let me look at what you're talking about. Let me pull up the packet. No, you're good. I'm sure. Uh, let me make sure. It's right here.
Um, on the front of the text, yes.
Those are just busy.
Yep.
So Kansas made a motion to approve the extended agenda and the December twenty seventh city council meeting minutes. Now from the second motion and discussion. Either corrections that need to be made or anything? All right, here you have all the things that I have.
Uh, I.
Most of the carries. When approved because then agenda, then the December twenty seventh city council meeting minutes, that brings us off the next section, new business. And uh, quick process there, there's going to happen a little bit about it, and you got the staff that are going to speak about it. Um, recreation is more of a complicated thing that will probably start. Anything lost would have been January twenty four, prove that we got a lot more, there's just a lot moving deeper. And if we don't get the right people, get upset, so on and so forth. I went into that, I went to the meeting and they go and talk to different mayors, so it's even more complicated than other people. You have a campus school, a private school, you get the county head, it gets very complicated. So I'm glad that you're putting this topic and um you're looking forward to hearing that. So we're, we're, we realize all of us out of dealing with recreation, so looking forward to hearing about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, multiple entities across the state of Kansas have already created their own recreation commissions with their own school districts, including K's, Abilene, Parsons, Aporia, Newton, Quaslin and others. The purpose of the presentation is to present the idea of a recreation commission, just to introduce the ideas, see how you feel about it. Um, that's something that Ronnie brought to my attention a while back. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Brian Vasque and Tom McGeeboy. Their uh, their uh, their introductions are included in your packet. And they had to talk to us about what they did in their districts. Thank you. If you can step to the podium, please.
Here, I have a few questions you might have. We have all, have a long day. Speaker is going to present different operations, so. My way back. To go off this, you know. What if? He just want to put that together a little more and then explain. Uh, hey, one thing, thanks, and Brian and I, you know, you, you guys, just uh. I think we're the people in Kansas Recreation Parks Association, some of the uh where that recreation commissions, when we say the uh started, this is where it first you have to do that, the one I was all about. We started something called Recreation Commission Summit, where all the recreation directors, board members, they come together and discuss the different issues with recreation. You know, HR issues. You know, uh, planning issues, things like that. And one of the things that Brian and I have done uh, is until I care, we just try to all the same uh with our explanation, our hires can come out. We put up what uh, what we call, before planning, maybe more board members, you know, like statue, uh, things that they can, as board members, not like uh uh, board members, not overall, now parts of call at first base. You know, um, that's what we've been doing is we thought there were, I mean, there's a recreation, you know, water training, things like that. So what I, what I always do is draw Texas. These are the people that visualize something with pictures. So there are, right here, there are only three different types of recreation missions in state Kansas. There's a city standardized recreation mission, or a uh, that's the example or convention plus the board members, plus four board members, and those four uh, I think they have a lot of members playing the role. Now we go to the next page, which is the school district established the recreation commission. And so, uh, they are uh, those things, same format under the school district, where they do under a joint commission, that is uh, put on by the state and the school district, school board to establish a recreation mission. Two are appointed by the state, two are appointed by the school, because it's in school board, and one is not our system. Okay, so they're different ways of doing things, but I think one thing we want to talk about is the formality, the rules, I almost think state. I still have a rare statement, I guess, I get home, three mistakes there. What uh, what? Just to establish a project. I think, you know, there's many, there are going to be four. But one thing that does be, my, my, doing the joint work, really is there's a, there's a, that's all uh, relationship between the school district and the state, it brings it together, it helps them a lot of work. The other thing is, uh, one of the things that has to have, okay, is this cannot be formed between the, the school board and the city commission, just it's gonna have to go to a vote, from the team. And the group of people, you're gonna start this out, you're gonna need five percent of all the five votes in the school district. Establish your recreation to bring it to a vote. Okay, um, and so, that's the first thing it has to have. Um, after that, you gotta find the time to be able to field election. And when they put it all, they're just approved. Then the joint bodies get, the city commission, school district get together and what they do is establish a resolution, the school district's here. Where the ordinance with city commissions due to establish the recreation commission, and then appointing, so to say. You're the one to leave the school board or the one to, you know. Okay, yet we have to figure out what's mentioned. Initial list of the recreation commission that's now and then the state that you, you know, also, they could, they could, but then before you not shout, really, you promised they want to set the uh, the, they'll, they'll be, you know. So, that's something, you know, we have some brief notes that we got, we don't align. You know, uh, we've got a lot of Kansas is bringing the, the state, that's the uh, for, for, for irony, and the common law is saying that it's three and four, we go to the board, you know, when you start, the government, substitutions. Uh, I think the whole, uh, and basically, nonsense is said, I was just calling, it's all, it's, it's all taxing. All that you, what you use, it gives some school district pass rights, so that's a threat. I think, like Tom said, if you get, if you get anyone, it's just a city, only cities following, I think, the school district is the school district, so I think, it's a joint, go with the party or the city, that's the school. So I know we're getting kind of, I mean, but, you know, the question, you have, you know, superintendents here, it's uh, the, the main thing is if they go from the city, right, to the recognition, basically, the last thing is studying the school. And so, um, we did not, I know they're living in the school district, and I think most of them are probably just um, with a lot of that, that's true.
What's the public's advice?
Right, that's it. Yeah, one, you had, you had, you had, for running the recreation mission. Board members, approve the budget, submit the budget, through the school district, and, and that's, you know, all happened, not uh, well, I can adjust the budget, no. The recreation mission was instead, the school district, you know, in the world, you know, that letting the amount tax and the original budget. Uh, probably with that, if you go from the city to the school district, they're living, they're probably drawing, so that, because, and, my, my, we're coming, but there, down there, where it's, you're having, our school district, where it's involving, close to three times, they won't send, that's totally, just, they draw, the living is just, so for, 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 uh, people that live outside of the street. We, I, I take really bad, too, it's in the rural community. You know, it's really hard to tell people, kind of, hey, you're not a city resident, maybe there are facilities, but you have to not be lovely for that. Because it's hard to go to the city, but the city residents feel like, we're being lucky too much. So I think this would be this would kind of make things fair, in a way. Is that what you're saying? You know, uh, I, I'm, right, how that, my career's still not even important, you know, this and um we're going to, uh, at that time, it's down about fifteen hundred, uh, school district, where it's like five, I see. So, where majority of people that were, they're paying our program, that's our city. So that's why it was the learning, uh, school district, where I think that's, nobody says this, that's, that's the way it is. Hey, you know, I know, you know, I mean, that, uh, I mean, right now, school district is using city facilities, uh city is using school district facilities, but you can do, you know, I haven't told you what I negotiated with our, uh, one of our superintendents, who was probably twenty five years ago. You know, I mean, um, he, uh, he and I were sitting on a platform, and then while we were charging each other so, we just said, wherever needs facilities, so, you know, the recognition has first use of school district facilities outside of school district, that's it. We're in there before, five groups are coming. However, anything with the school district, using our facility, the free charge and maintaining the data fields, moving, gaining you know, and then you space, we need to always say, so there's that joint cooperation, more, you know, when you start getting cross-selling, it isn't a it's a headache, I mean, you know, and doing that, so it, if it works out for us, more like that. Basically, we do this thing, so, definitely do it, do it, do it. Of course, right. We're going to involve this, that, where it's, we, so, the school district are not very into uh, they're more, you said, or anything, somebody's waiting for their, I think, they're just going, I mean, uh, I don't know, they're just saying, they're not, but they just want thoughtful, there's, we have staff, and with the order, uh, value reason, and the names are, they're the staff, if you, if they're still using, still with it, yeah, right, and I know this year, so, you know, they're, they're, has like
There's still checks and balances in 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 place for recognition, it's just that they just don't go in and start laughing whatever they want. It still goes through a process through a, you know, the elected officials to the school board.
I mean, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves and I know this is way down the road. Is this the only thing the voters can vote on? Is this one subject? Can it be other items? Cause I mean, to put a vote together is some work and you know, and ordination and all that kind of stuff. Can there be other items? Or is this just recreational? The vote only can be for recreation?
No, you can, I mean, you can have it in your general election. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you could, you can step, um, I want to, if you could say that your general election, remember you gotta wanna do it. Or if you have something come up in the spring or whatever too.
But the resolution will be just for recognition. That's it. You can add water and sewer on to it.
Right, but you could have during that general election, that and then other items, but they can't be bundled together.
No.
Okay.
It has to be just.
I know, uh, President Ron, uh, Marion, Kansas just went through this process in there. They didn't do it in the general election, but they did it. It was the first week of December that they did there as a nurse. I know it's a little bit different because their city abandoned and just did it away with their, uh, city department. So basically the citizens didn't have a choice. They wanted recreation. They had to pass it or not. And then it passed thirty, I think it was like seventy-nine, seventy-five percent.
Yeah. So the next question, so once again, getting way ahead of ourselves, but we have a rodeo arena. Um, we'd like to help them, you know, so right now we're just trying to figure out what this relationship is gonna be. But if they are on city property, right? This rec commission can devote money even though that they own the facility. They can, they can earmark that money. You're saying this board has the power to say, alright, we're gonna help you upgrade that facility.
They, they do have the authority and they get the funding there.
Right.
It's, who's, who owns it, city?
Uh, club, private club, nonprofit club.
Well.
We owes the property to the operator.
Okay, okay, you have a leasing, you have a lease with them.
That's another. And this is, this is why, and so that we can establish a relationship and then, you know.
You know, that, that's always a possibility. There's different things you could enter in agreement. I would give the school board on board with this too, because it's gonna, the funding is gonna be coming to the school board. So, I mean, the one good thing about a recognition is the, the, um, the support that you can have between the two agencies to work together, you know, there's gonna be things. So like what we do at noon, and I don't know if you guys are familiar, but, um, we are, we entered into an agreement with our, our city or school district and us where we, we created a public building commission. And that's anonymous, if you're familiar with that. But anyway, we all are paying one mill towards that. Um, that public building commission, what goes to improve athletic facilities and care. Well, then we entered into another agreement with our school district. And, yeah, anybody knows too, is years ago, they, the school district was afraid that their, uh, LOB was gonna be challenged, cause back there it can be challenged every five year. So we, the rec commission went into an agreement with the school board where we were paying a nervous portion of that PBC payment. So we are paying in our PDC payment right now, we're paying two mils and the city paid one mil. So we're paying the school district proportion of that PDC. Because recognitions have a little bit more flexibility than what school districts or even cities.
And they raised your mill levy.
The school district did, uh, our authority, cause at that time, our, our authority was five. And we raised it up, we're up to seven mils, but we're only eight now, but at that time we raised it to seven. So that we can raise the school district portion of that agreement. So there's a lot of creative things that recognitions can do. Uh, you know, we can't purchase real, the only thing recognitions cannot purchase real property. It can be donated or given to us or, or.
Facilities, can facilities be given to you?
They, they should, yeah. And all of our facilities that we operate, manage the city, everyone.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, just looking for ways to.
There's a lot of.
Different entities.
Yeah.
Because you get more help out, there's more support and then, you know.
Well, we, we do, we have air governmental agreements with the city to retire, have a city retire bonds for us for ten year payoff. And we sign those agreements and we're paying the bonds off over a ten year period. Right now, I, I think, uh, since nineteen ninety, since nineteen ninety, we have gone through. Nine, nine, yeah, I'm counting my head, nine, uh, ten year bond repayment agreements. And we're down to eleven in one year. So we're gonna be debt free.
Right, we've done, we've got a couple since then too, but, uh, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to a recognition, because you know, the, the authority or the flexibility, um, that we have, but I mean, there's still state statutes of certain things that we can do. Um, but, um, they're not as tight as what you guys have to deal with.
And that's what I handed out to you, are the state statutes that deal with creation of a recognition. So I'm trying to bullet point it at the, the last sheet, um, the, uh, what would have to take place before that. And then, um, oh, and then when you appoint the board members, you have to, they're four year terms on board members, so when you establish a recognition, uh, the school district points for one year. And then you can always reappoint at the fore, so it divvies everything out in the long run there after the four year.
And there is a, a statute in place too, if the citizens down the road decide they didn't like this direction, they can all, there is a process where they can start a petition, uh, to take it back to the voters and to, uh,
disband it.
Disband it, yeah. So there is a process.
Sure.
There as well.
And there are communities our size with this type of.
I'll say here, very being the, being the correct department, yes, city, your size.
Yeah.
Mostly, most of your cities this size are recognitions.
Okay. Any questions for member?
I'm not sure how all this works, but we have, uh, every this year we have a walk for cancer using school property. Will that affect this in any way? I mean, who do we go to? Cause that's private citizens. That's not anything to do with record, has nothing to do with school. How would that work?
If you go through the school district for facilities, right now they're still continuing to do that.
They would do the same thing.
Or you could have the recognition mentioned coordinated with you in the school district.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, you know, really, nothing will change other than, um, you'll have an established recognition, uh, and allowing them to go through the school district. Really, nothing else should really change. Uh, cause from what I understand, you're using facilities through them, uh, so nothing will really change, you know. Other outside agencies will, if they're using their facilities now, will continue to use them both skill through you.
Questions?
That was what all my questions were about, was all these other agreements or these other people use their facilities, how they manage.
Diva, did you have anything you wanna add to that?
Just a couple verifying things. So when I was reading this summary page, it talks about the facilities and maintenance involved with preparing the football, preparing the, um, softball, baseball field. It would include the football building, right now it's not.
Okay, what it has to do is you, the school district and the recognition would have to be agreeing to do that. We, like I said, we do that in our community, but that we do have conflict in agreements and things like that to work with them. But the thing is, um, to get that staff that he needs to do that, you might have to increase your levy. Um, but it saves you staff monies and stuff that can go to. Cause when, when we took over the facility, we took over the football field, uh, from the school district, uh, back in two thousand four. And with that, so, um, the city, the school district no longer had to provide staff to maintain a cleanup after the, so we do that all in within our department to do all of that now. So on game night, so the only thing that school district has to provide is game management during. We take care of facility and take care of the maintenance, the cleanup afterwards and all that stuff. But that would just have to be an agreement, school district would have with the recognition.
And so in regard for like the playgrounds, um, our elementary school is right downtown. And so we just relented to watch the sand, however, the turf needs attention. It entered into the agreement, the turf becomes a responsibility of recognition.
Yeah, now we personally don't take care of the playground for a bit at our schools, but there's nothing that says it can't be done. So especially, I don't know if they're looking to add additional staff with, with the recognition.
If everything can be done.
With, if, if, if this go to the voters and it passes, let's say that you do, do the vote, you're asking for four, I'm gonna say five mil, so five, five mil. Um, so the voters approved to go five mil, so you guys would add five mils. So it does, does not affect school district mils. I think you guys write fifty mils right now, does that sound alright? So then you'd add five more, so you gotta be fifty-five mils, fifty to the school district, five to the recognition. Okay, so, um, and once the voters approve that, and here, here's the thing then, is that the school district has to give them five mils. So you as a superintendent can't say, no, we need you to cut it down to four mils or whatever. If the recognition says we need five mils, you gotta give five mils. So then the voters approved it, and you guys just have to, the next cycle, budgeting cycle, you will have to levy, uh, whatever the recognition approved.
Yeah, I can tell you with our school district, they just talk about in newspaper and on the radio, they just talk about their mill levy for their schools.
Right.
The recognition is something else they don't even mention that.
And worried that that may be misunderstood, or that the community would think we're asking for additional.
Yeah, that, and that's, that, that's the thing that you need to really educate them on, because, uh, whenever you establish a new, you know, that's the biggest thing is to educate them and make sure they, now the thing that's, that'd be good is if you're adding five mils, but you guys are gonna drop seventeen or whatever, whatever that number is. So that's a good education for, for the city and the school board to educate the people on.
But, but anybody outside of the city, you're gonna raise a tax.
I agree, it's okay, not that five mils.
But as of right now, the city's covering all of the expenses for the use of our facilities for all the people outside of our district.
Exactly.
And right now we have district fees and non-district fees for kids. So if they're not in the school district, that they're paying, uh.
Well, the district.
We, we call it just what we call in district fees at discount. And then these are normal ones, cause we get a lot of people, a lot of people from Northline County, Southline County. I get people from Coffee County and Chase County coming over to use our, 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 you know, soccer, our facilities, basically.
But the thing is, is you guys, this is a, this is a long process. This is not just something that you guys are gonna vote on here in three months. You're gonna have to educate your community, cause you know, like I said, people living in the city, you're dropping their mill considerably. And they're gonna buy mils to the school district. And even though, um, but then in order to you to go above five mils in the future, the school board has to approve that. You have to go through the process of resolutions and, you know, or challenging and all that stuff too. But in the vote, I would recommend that you guys in the vote, what you're looking at, step in, you'll ever get.
Right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna close it there now. That's good. You guys are really helpful and.
Yeah.
Um, thank, well, sure, came by. This is a great, uh, way to start the new year, is to have something kind of new and novel. It has a lot of benefits. Uh, but a lot of work needs to be done and, um, you know, I could just come up a lot, you know, just what Dustin said, I think our, our voters in the city would love it. I mean, this is something that Claire for, for a long time and I, and you know, now all of a sudden being part of U S D three twenty-seven, hmm, you know, you know what I'm saying, it becomes, it changes a little bit. We have the record, so I like the out of district fees, that type of thing is, is nice because gotta, gotta make it fair. And that's where we had a hard time. I think what you talked about, we experienced that crops charging, just, it's a lot of.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There's no way to win, you know, so.
You know, and the thing is, like even in our community, a lot of the people that live out of city limits participate in our programs. You know, so.
Sure.
You know, even though we're levying them, um, that's, the city's, they'll have to, they're, they're getting a lot of benefit out of it.
Sure, absolutely, right, so I like it. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the budget calendar for twenty twenty-three. And Dustin, you wanna go ahead and educate us on that?
Yes, sir, this is just me helping myself, getting organized and getting your endorsements. The main reason why I'm presenting it to you is because there's. Of, uh, council sessions to discuss various budget items, like the one I wanted to discuss with you. I have the department heads and us get together to discuss capital expenditure requests and projects, help me what you want, fill this priority. For me, just so when we go into budget our projects, um, we are in line with what you want us to do. Thank you, Diva. Um, and then one other one is to discuss personnel proposals. So I'm gonna work with each department and for them to submit their budget proposals to me for their personnel, and I wanted to counsel weigh in on that. Just to spread out the pain of budget over five months as opposed to cram it all into me. So, uh, this just helps me, uh, provide structure to our budget process. It helps me, it sets target goals for staff and, and, uh, and sets times, uh, times for us to visit with you and how you want us to proceed. So that, and it's just based, and this is in line with calendars that stolen from other cities, uh, and it's in line with the Kansas move.
Yeah, it looks like workshops are all on nights, we have meetings.
Yes. I tried to triangulate with that.
So those are nice, we need to make sure we're zooming in from somewhere else or?
I was thinking donuts, coffee, or, you know, some night freshman, just a, a night where staff can come talk to you about what we're, what we're experiencing and why we're requesting.
Well, it is amazing. After you do the budget, all of a sudden you're like, I wish we had more time and we've thought through that, it's just the more you do, the better it is. Um, any questions about that or? No, we'll vote in here, is there? I don't think so.
And to public listening, this is a good time to get your request in. Other organizations want money, support of our budget.
And, uh, I also have a date for that. We're gonna reach out to them in May. So, so, uh, there will be a form that, like, if I don't have one internally, I'll make sure one's designed. So we'll push it to all the citizens and citizens groups who are requesting funding from us.
Any questions for Dustin on this? Alright, leads us to the next item, which is exactly what we're talking about, um, and Ellsworth County, uh, County Council on Aging has requested funds. And, um, you know, I think you can kind of go up to a little bit more detail.
Yeah, I've, I got a letter in my box from Florence and Fos, I, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, but Fosdick. But Ellsworth County Council on Aging is requesting an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in addition to the eleven thousand that council's already given up for this year. In the twenty twenty-three budget, she, uh, what she describes in her, uh, is it Florence, uh, here, she? Forget she, she, alright, what she is describing is she's looking to offset inflation and the help of the purchases of a new van. Because the van they have now is aging and I think it's at one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one miles. Um, the, the letter that I scanned, that Kelly scanned is enclosed, goes in a little more detail. Um, as in my recommendation, what, uh, I caution us on is we've already, uh, turned down people. Uh, so, uh, the senior center, the senior center in particulars. So we did set a precedent with that, but I also didn't want, uh, council not being aware of all requests we're getting. So I presented it to you, it's your call. So this would be something theoretically, reach out to them in May and say, now's the time to. Yes, if you wanted to push it to twenty twenty-four, uh, they're requesting twenty twenty-three, so I, uh, I just, my caution is that precedent.
That's good, presence, it's sad. Anything else on that subject, Dustin, can you go over?
No.
Alright, moving right along here, we've got the next item on the agenda is a raise for returning seasonal staff members.
Yes, sir. So, uh, Ronnie is requesting of council a twenty-five cent raise for our returning seasonal staff from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. This is quarter. I think you said, you, right, you said Ron roughly fifteen people are returning this year?
Yeah, fifteen, eighteen, you just don't know as far as lifeguards go, who's coming back and, and so on. So that's typically what we try to do every year. They'll say that's customary, right, well, um.
So do I have a hurdle from council to proceed to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, and thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the council approval for tuition reimbursement.
Yes, sir, uh, the policy states that the mayor or myself is the, is the approving authority. So I just wanted to ask through the council's blessing on tuition reimbursement for my doctoral program. I also getting, Colby has also in the process of applying for Kansas State to get his ministers. So I've been helping him with that. I had a recommendation for him, uh, but I'm just requesting council's blessing on that. But I included my tuition bill, just so you know what, uh, what I pay on my own. Your student loans, but.
I don't know, I think it's a part of policy. We've already established that. I think he's just not advised, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They, they do state that I need to get prior approval from you.
Yeah, it's intended that Dustin, your policy manuals, it would approve for everyone else. But since he's asking for himself, I think that's the point, I'm trying to be in front of you for blessing. But the mayor is also listed, so I think you could formally approve unless there's somebody that's.
Think the leader needs to set the impressive or set the example. You're, you've definitely done that through your whole career, so. Um, I think the Colvin thing is awesome. It's something that has come on for, um, for a lot of reasons. I told him recently, there was a grow Ellsworth event, he was there, I said, I've been thinking about you all day, but you guys did that on your own. I didn't need to get involved in that, and just naturally pushed him in that direction. So I think you would be great for the professional. I think that if Ellsworth could produce a city administrator too, it just, it just helps us build our network. Um, you know, so I, I think it's great. I've, I've told him I was extremely excited, so I like this. Alright, the next item is the approval of the Ampride twenty twenty-three C M B license.
Their license and, or the application, the week after you guys approved the, but, the main match of them, so. I'll issue it tomorrow, it gets approved tonight, so.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion to approve twenty twenty-three C M B license for Ampride.
I'll second.
The counselor, Renard, has made a motion to approve the Ampride twenty twenty-three C M B license, and I believe it was counselor Oats. Seconded that motion, any discussion needed? Alright, Gary, none of us in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the Ampride twenty twenty-three C M B license. And so now we move on to the unfinished business, uh, would be the approval of the city's mission, vision and value statement.
I'm just requesting council to approve the mission, vision and values. I just included some info in there in the background. Just to provide some background of what I'm attempting to accomplish with these documents. Like, I'm, basically, I'm gonna use it as my guiding principles for all decisions and budgets. And personnel matters, you name it, it's the foundation that I'm looking to build your organization around. Which is why I spend so much time trying to, you know, visit with the public and, uh, continue to build rapport with y'all, to talk to each one of you individually, to get your input. I've talked to the staff a great deal about it. They've been very helpful. And corrected some things on it than I had originally, so. Uh, if there's no other corrections that you feel that you may, I'm hoping that we can get that approved tonight.
So, yeah, we had a conversation, I think we talked about it before, we looked at it, we liked it. Um, if we don't approve it tonight, it's not the end of the world, but we need to kind of roadmap, because it, it, it delays other things that Dustin wants to do. You know, he had to kind of know where to point us, and so once that gets approved, you know, the budget and different items like that kind of fall in line behind that. So I said, well, let's either approve it tonight or let's set up another meeting and we edit it and hand it back to them. Whatever that plan is, we just need to give them a little guidance regarding that.
I still think every day's two words.
We can, we can approve it with that change, it's not a problem.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to let the council, I move to approve the closed vision, mission, vision, mission, vision and value statement as the official mission, vision and value of City Ellsworth.
Council Chrisfield has made a motion to approve the city's mission, vision and value statement. Um, council Hanson has seconded that motion. Any discussion needed on those items? Alright, Gary, none of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, we've got, uh, the motion, of course, carries. We've got a new mission, vision and value statement outstanding. I think that, yes, we don't, um, you know, we, we need to know where we're going, and I think you did a great job. And appreciate those folks that did show up at those meetings and Darcy went and thought they were very productive. So, um, thank you for dealing that, so pretty good.
All the people that toured me there.
Sure. Alright, um, Kirk and Michael update, John, did you wanna give us an update?
Certainly, good evening. It'll be very brief this evening. We're kind of in the finishing stages of a lot of the active projects, winding things down. Uh, on the neighborhood multi-use path project, we did turn in, they called the plans to estimating, which is ninety-nine percent complete. To Kato December twenty-eighth. The deadline to get those in was, uh, January fourth, I believe, so we were shortly out of that. But it's in the queue to get it ready for letting in April. Uh, we've been in contact with all the utility companies now, and feel confident they are getting their ducks in the road to get the utilities relocated. By the, so they were gonna get their contractor out this month. A T and T is gonna be in the spring. And Kansas Gas has been relocating their gas line during construction, coordinated with the contractor. So it looks like everything on track for April twenty twenty-three, letting for Kato, yeah, Kato visit project. And then they'll send a letter to the city, sharing with you what the bids are, what's a, a little bit. And asking the city council to verify that the local match funding is a base to move forward with construction. Uh, the Spring High Sheriff Sidewalk Project, Sidewalk Building Project, just, uh, working with the contractor to find out when they think they're gonna start. What I've gathered, uh, we're working on a project with them and starting right now, it's two projects. And they're nearly done or maybe, maybe done with those two projects, which is probably a couple of months yet. Cause when they'll be ready to come up here, but we'll keep you apprised when that comes along.
Hey, John, may I interject for a moment? Um, I've had multiple conversations with, uh, John Thiemer from the bank. And, cause there is a dispute over the urban gutter charge. Uh, but he informed me last Monday that the bank has, a board has approved to pay for their cost, their shared cost, so I would like to thank them.
Uh, the K L C Clip Project resurfaced, north levels through town, again, working on getting those field check plans ready so we can have that, uh, field check meeting. There's this type of product, there's not a huge difference between field check plans and final plans, so once we get that meeting completed, we can get the plans and specifications ready to bid that project pretty quick. I know presumably having two asphalt contractors here in town with two different charity projects, we have AIPAC. Supposed to do one forty, one fifty-six intersection this summer, adventure operations supposed to do the K fourteen, one fifty-six intersection this summer. And we like to try to take advantage of them already, having the equipment here, they can. And we'd like to try to take advantage of them already having the equipment here. They can bid on this project and squeeze it into their schedule. So we are working to get that project bid in the earlier. Part of the year and get it set up for summer construction. On sanitary sewer extension projects, Kirk and Michael, we got the plans and specifications for the rolling down electric sewer main extension approved through the Department of Health and Environment. Uh, on December twentieth. So the engineering side is completed. And the city attorney is still working on the. Obtaining utilities when needed to run that sewer extension. And then that has some discussion Dustin had to. For one, there's a precast concrete manhole involved. I've probably got two month B time. In my opinion, so in my opinion, the city can go ahead and order the materials. And then they need to procure a contractor for installation, at least they got the material at hand and have it ready to go. They get somebody lined up for installation.
And um, I did talk to Joe today about that very subject. And Joe says he's got all the water side parts ordered. He just has been out for because of day six, so he will measure that stuff when he gets back into the super front sort of.
And then we were also contracted by the city to design the eleven street sewer main extension to service the residents at fourteen oh one less eleven. We're planning on getting the field survey, total survey done in January. And then we'll turn those plans around, get them into KHC for approval as well as soon as those are done. And serve that. Okay, last thing was the turning project. Again, I've got no word from anybody over the APAC because I'm just going to start that project. Probably not. It's going like this. So we'll see spring or summer. I don't. Remember when the last start date was, I might go maybe we'll reach out to Kato, find out what that date is and we can always keep that on our radar. That's that's what I had to share for this evening.
There you go. Thank you for any questions for John. No questions. Very good. Thank you, John. Thank you all. All right, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the crazy park update. So December twenty ninth, I took a tour of the city. Dustin. In an offer, we had some time and so. You know, we've talked about this. I think they want some very clear direction, you know, of the direction to go in for the park. And um. Put a lot of thought into it, want to get everybody's opinions and. You know, I think that what what we ultimately are going to try to do is try to make it look good ourselves, you know, uh, you're going to meet the soil and water commission versus soil and water. Commission, when we met with Troy, he's the street department foreman. You know, so he knows that he's going to be tasked with along with Dustin to attempt to grow grass, make it look as good as it can look. Do whatever you do if they need equipment, do what we can do with the resources that we have. But what I don't want to have happen, and I've thought through this, um. And this is a question for you, Melissa. We get into June or July and citizens still just aren't happy or Troy and the city are like, maybe just don't have. The equipment, the know how to get in there. There's there's water there. I mean, whether we can get it out, we don't know. Um. Can we put a budget item in for twenty twenty four and say, hey, whatever we do for the park? This is assuming that he can't come up with any alternate funding. We just put a general budget item in for twenty twenty four to do something else, to at least start the project. So this would be, you know, you may have an answer for me, but but I wanted that question answered because. You know, we also don't want Dustin to spend an enormous amount of time. Getting, you know, town hall meetings, getting proposals together. Because it may work, we may be able to make it where it looks fairly good, then we'll waste it all that time. So I thought. If we just had a kind of a plan B. I would feel a lot better and I think everybody would. And then we would sit tonight and say. Here's our plan, put it in writing, publish it on Facebook, the newspaper can have it. Here's the direction we're going in. Um, but but what are your thoughts?
So as I wrote down in the background information, we uh, we are going to get into actual financial resources conservation service. We tried to reach out to him last week, but he isn't available. So um, I will get in contact with him. I've also been brainstorming with John to get some help there. We do have pipe, that pipe that's kind of hanging out in the middle there. There is a purpose for that, John, if you want to come up and help me. Um, but we there, uh, we are going to insert several tiles. And we uh, to try to get some drainage of that uh, just standing water there. Uh, John and I were just brainstorming also what uh, putting some plates on the water on the upper part, just to get equipment on to. There, um, we also, uh, I, he also suggested uh. Getting a hold of some local contractors just to get their take on it and what their suggestions are on how to resolve the issue, just to information gather. Um, what other stuff can you think of as a consultant?
Well, I think that pretty well sums it up. The reason for the pipe is something I talked to Joe about is when we dug in the trench drain. Pipe installed it up on the upper hillside. There's a the east side of Doug was. That water's coming down and it's catching that water coming from the west is draining down the trenches, dumping it there to south end. What we're talking about is it's a six inch pipe is draining that water. If we can put a bigger pipe to capture it. And take it across the basis straight into the channel to take it away from the park area. That will alleviate some of the water that's just going right into the basin curve. So that's the reason for that pipeline, I'm sure.
Okay.
But as far as if there's a need to install further drainage, one of our design plans that show, when in a French drain, but uh, core rock. Uh, if you can work, build working platform, or even just have a three feet of soil and start from the side and just start building your way out to to get equipment out there if you. To dig a trench drain and kind of with that rock and fillers.
Right, sounds like a decent interim plan. But but I guess, you know, John, you can you can chime in here too. You know, we get into July, August, and people are just like, well, we're not happy. We wanted something else, we want to do something major. Can we put a budget item in for twenty twenty four? I mean, we'd rather not put the burden on the tax. People or the people for taxes, but. You know, we don't want to wait till twenty twenty five to do something and be miserable for two years. I mean, I I don't want that to happen. Can we do that? Can we just say we're allocating a certain amount of money, but we don't know what we're allocating it for. We're allocating it for the park. Then Dustin could do the town halls, get the proposals, get the ideas, get the drawings and get the ball started in different directions. Can we do that? Okay.
Couldn't we just use our authority utility fund?
Something.
You could, yes. I mean, yeah, I mean, the cleanest way is just about that, feel a little better. Using that for the moderate collection, we start with, we're up to, but I think there was some money originally allocated for the project that's spent as well about that still.
Uh, earmarked for the project in the city or that guy. Warped into the general fund or something.
Right.
The project got closed, but that might be something to look into as well, sticking.
Right.
Twenty, twenty five thousand, something like that.
Right. But you know what I'm saying? We don't want to get into July or August and and then. People are unhappy. We failed. You know, I think we're asking a tall task of our street department. I mean, they may burn and succeed. But if they if they if they fail, the town's unhappy. We we don't want to go to the town and just say. Well, you know, we failed and twenty twenty four budget's done. You're going to have to wait till twenty twenty five. We don't want that to happen. You want to get rolling. You know, getting the proposals, come up with something that looks just even to be happy with and get it rolling. You know.
Sure, that's good.
Okay. Everybody think that's a good plan moving forward? Dustin, can you put that in writing? Just summarize that. Just said, in some way, put it on Facebook, let's get it to the newspaper. Whatever, you know, it's the Dustin Stanbaum manifesto, whatever you want to call that. You put your name on it, whatever. And you know, that's that's the guiding principle, kind of goes back to your mission, vision, and value. It's like, here's the plan for the park. And you know, we're going to get a lot of feedback between now and then and. People, you know, hope that we succeed and like, hey, that wasn't as hard of a thought, but if we've got to, we're ready to go with something else. It could be something dramatically different, but we've got to get the funding. Just to even get started with something different at the moment. Okay, all right, everybody's okay there? All right. So good. All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, so petitions and delegations. So Chuck, Aaron, Michael, right? Um, are you Michael? Michael Walsh?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to remember his name. Um. Carol, John Scott, Chuck.
Yes.
Do you have Scott, do you have any petitions and delegations? Do you want some time? Five minutes? Okay. All right, just checking. Okay, so moving on to department heads, Ronnie, do you have any? Oh, wait, Chuck, I did. I did say Chuck. Okay. Come on, Chuck.
I decided to come to a city council meeting this evening with no agenda other than to listen and learn. But today, this afternoon, I was at the library. To refer to retrofit a progressive light and fail of the LED kit. And I learned that we did receive a letter from the state libraries uh, authority. That says that they are refusing to fund us. Uh, for this year. And please, this is not Dustin's fault. Poor Dustin walked into this like stepping into quicksand. Uh, this has been ongoing for two years. The issue here, and I'm one, I'm wondering, I'm only bringing this up as an educational thing for the city council members. Uh, it sounds really flaky and I'm I'm just trying to educate you on what's going on here. It started um. With Mr. Barnago wanting to clean up the city budget, a good idea, a worthy project. But in the process, this would result in lowering the middle levy for the library. These state library authority. Has had a policy for years. I've been on library board for approximately fifteen years. Been the president for most of that time. And we have always been told, do not. Let your city, your your funding authority, whether it be city or county, do not. Let them reduce your mill levy or we will. Withhold all state support. That in dollars. Amounts to approximately twenty five thousand dollars a year. We would not have any lending. And and borrowing from other libraries, that would be gone. Any of the services that we get from Southern Kansas Library System out of Great Bend, gone. For example. Uh, anytime we need help with IT. They have an onboard IT person there at Great Bend CKLS, and he comes up here and helps us out, fixes it for us. If we didn't have that, we'd have to pay for that on our own. So that's just a couple of small examples. Of what we would lose in effect. Our library would become simply a card catalog library. That's it. And um. What's the logic in this policy? It's difficult to understand. The best that we've ever. Uh, been told as far as the logic for this is if your funding authority lowers your mail levy. That's a sign that they think they're doing a poor job and they have no competency. And I would hope that that's certainly not fixed here. Um, and so. This is just uh. I I I I felt like the city, like the previous uh, city administrator and Mr. Deardog, I felt like. They've done a good job of trying to clean up the city budgets and work on on making meal levies a little more accurate. We had, according to emails that I saw back and forth from Mr. Barnado and Mr. Deardog. That we had assurances from the state library authority that if we lowered. If with the reasoning for lowering the mail levy, that they would accept that and would not cut off our funding. Now, we have a letter. To the opposite of that. What I'm, I'm just asking. The city taking a sort of stance with the state library authority. And the city must do that because our library board is. Totally ineffective with with this. We uh, we have absolutely no say about that.
Glenn. Um, we, I've been in touch with the council. Uh, regarding this issue, and there is an appeals process that was outlined by the director of libraries and um, I'm in the process of uh, he was in right now. So I'm already on it. I'm, I mean, uh, it's uh, I appreciate it, but I think there is a discrepancy that I would like to talk to you about offline between what we show is what you're getting. In our books versus what you're stating you're getting. And I'll get with Colleen on that because I'm confused. Cause what Angela's telling me and what Kelly's telling me that you're getting is different in our books versus what you're getting in yours. Uh, that's where I need, I would like to reconcile that with you. Nothing is, it's been very.
That has been a very confusing thing for quite a long time. And we would very much appreciate getting that all cleared up and straight across the board.
And that's why we've been meeting with Colleen on the side. Angela and I going to meet with her is because we've noticed those discrepancies. We're trying to make sure our records match yours. So we know what we're looking at. When I appeal the library board that what I'm telling them is correct. And I am working.
Guys, I hate to do this, forgive me, but I think it's something we've done has been very successful. We we want to limit it to five minutes. Otherwise, we would kick it over to the agenda when it becomes so complex. We would have had time to do homework when we talked about. It gets to the point, we've got to have people sign up well in advance. We may have to do that. So. And we talked about this in library work too, you know, so we've got to keep that policy ironclad. We had one guy. Went over with and he was gone by that night for doing that. The the sale, we talked, he was, we talked about it afterwards and said. If you can't follow basic protocols, then we don't need you. But anyway. Yeah, we need to clean this up. We've talked about it how many times? So I agree. We, you know, hopefully it's the right guy. So thank you, Chuck. Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening. I just wondered.
Yeah.
Let the whole council know.
Sure.
How important this is.
Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, thanks.
All right, so that was petitions and delegations. Um. See, I've lost my place here. Here we go. All right, so on to department heads. Ronnie, did you want to? Okay, all right. Y'all course, uh, that was put into our packet, street. We talked a little bit about it. Um, definitely, let's get that in writing. Tom, Troy, Dustin. Make sure he understands that that group and you know, Ronnie, if they need your help, I mean, it's all hands on deck to make the park look good. Anybody's ideas would be helpful. You know, you get a landscape contractor in towns. They're like, hey, this is what you do. I've seen this before. And you talk to them. So. Um, water sewer's not here, fire's not here. Chief, did you have anything?
I said it really was more mistaken, more right, right? It's not sure. So I wouldn't get it. So I promise I won't take long one. So. Uh, in your package, you can see we took a little over forty six hundred calls for service, collectively over this department. Took a hundred and ninety criminal cases. We could have easily taken two hundred and fifty. I'm a firm believer that it's not a criminal matter and it can be resolved without taking a police report. Handle it that way. I've worked with agencies. I know of agencies that like to stack their case numbers. So they can say, oh, we need this, we need that based off of that. I figure our service speaks for itself. We're having issues other places. Like. No matter how many cases you take in a year is representation of what we actually accomplish. Um, I'd like to thank uh, council. Uh, mayor, admin, city staff, assistance, your, your support twenty three and then um, as we've had in years past, the little six years I've been here. Um, at corner asking the end of the year, uh, on the morning of the thirty first. I've been, I'd like to publicly thank several agencies because of this. We had an aggravated kidnapping, aggravated burglary, felony domestic violence here in the city. Um, collectively, the HSL patrol, the Eldwood County Sheriff's Office, Wright's Counting Sheriff's deputies. Lions Police Department, Sterling Police Department, and the Reno County Sheriff's Office all assisted in the apprehension. Our suspect in that case is currently sitting in jail on five hundred thousand dollar bond. So. Um, I appreciate all those agencies and their help and assistance and and giving that ended resolve peacefully. No, no injuries or damage to any government entities or own vehicles. So. That was good. Um. That that's finishing into your paperwork as far as what needs to be submitted to the KBI, the um, C post and everything, the boards that we. Four things to when we start on twenty twenty three stuff. So that's it. Did you guys have anything to make?
Chief. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right, um. Don't have treasure here tonight. Uh, city attorney, Melissa. Okay. Well, that's right. I'm pretty sure you don't. I already know what's going to happen. Yeah.
Um. So Ronnie, Dustin, and I have started working on uh, some of the practices for the rec center rental. And so we kind of wanted to bring that in front of you guys and get your feedback. Um, we have. I think it's a church organization actually that's requested a continual use, like in every Sunday use of the center. We kind of had the discussion, kicked around my office, church and state. We kind of had the discussion, kicked around my office, church and state, whatever, whatever. I've kind of come back to, or we've kind of come back to, you just treat everyone the same if they want to pay for the recurring rental. Um you, you just treat everyone the same. It's not like we're saying this is the elsewhere sponsored church. We're saying this is the same as any other rental. Um. The problem or what Dustin brought up is that we don't necessarily have. A standard process for a recurring rental. We do have an agreement that we're going to polish up a little bit for like a one-time rental where you put down a security deposit and then you get, get. You pay, you pay an hourly rate and then you get some money back if you clean up or whatever. We do have one current um individual. Pretty who has the recurring um rental. I think she uses it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. She doesn't, I think she just sort of has an oral agreement. That's what she's done all along. I think what we would like to do is put an agreement in writing so that everyone who wants to do this sort of recurring. Option, uh they treated the same. Some things that come up with regards to that is the rate, uh the rental rate and. Uh my recommendation is to require individuals who are going to do that to have an insurance policy. I don't think she has one right now. Um but that's my recommendation. You guys can obviously shoot that down if you're opposed. I'm not trying to make it more difficult or, or I just, if we're going to set this precedent, I would like for everyone, same thing for the church reputation. I would like to request that they have an insurance policy that we have, try to copy up. So I'd like that to be a part of the agreement. Um. So I guess we're just trying to get your feedback on, on all these things before we start. My hope is to have these agreements in front of you for our bulk next meeting as far as. We'll have a one-time rental. Agreement type thing and then like the recurring is still these, but not really uh. It's basically a recurrent rental. It's kind of our, our current down.
I wanted to request at least one million dollars for insurance policy. Do we know who sells this in town? Or I mean, how easy is it for them to get it? I mean, is it?
I do.
It actually is pretty easy. Okay. So it's one of the essence of logic. Um okay.
And it's just, I mean, it's gonna be more of a cost to all theseers if they don't carry insurance to go out and get an insurance.
Right.
But it's C Y I don't.
Yeah. Well, so this, 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 this is for not only the front of the building, but the saddle club. And if we do the four H.
We asked the saddle club to get an insurance policy to sign theirs, which is why I recommend, and this is not.
Right.
They have a fee for like exclusive use.
Right.
Property. You would do the same thing for four H and F exclusive use of the car. But this is not, this is more of a rental.
Right, this is different then.
Still.
The spirit of this.
In my opinion, but again, you guys can veto me on that, but I. If something happens, I'm gonna be like, hey, remember when I.
Yeah. And see this, but, but the rental not to, I mean, I don't know, I'm not in the insurance business. Would that be? Even higher risk? There's just less invested, like the. The saddle club's more invested, four H would be more invested, you know, so it'd be screening people trying to be safe, that kind. Somebody rents at one time. Right? I mean, wouldn't that be even longer?
A insurance policy for a one.
A recurring though.
But for these ones that were, they're gonna keep coming back and using our facility.
Right. I, 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 I mean, the little bit of all fairness, if we ask the others to do this, then. This, this is a large amount about fairness and, and understanding. You know, this is kind of how we're going to board. The other thing to keep in mind about that, that area, we're gonna talk a little bit more about it. We got a lot of different entities there and I think the more we make it uniform. You know, I mean, it makes it hard on you. You've already found that, you know, that.
Well, I can tell you right now, if somebody wants to have a birthday party, we're gonna have them have some type of liability insurance.
Yeah.
I'm not for it.
You're not? So the.
No, yeah, I agree. And I, I was not.
The one time, you're talking to Karen.
Not for the one time.
Right, you're talking to Karen.
Yes, I agree.
A big clarifier here is our insurance policy. Our insurance policy, I think, will cover single use of the facility. However, when you're starting to talk about insurance, when you're starting to talk about actual entities who are using your facilities. On a regular basis and they're teaching other kids and all that, or teams. That's when, and they're not affiliated with the city, that's when our insurance company is going to get really petty. And then I, then we're gonna have to make huge payouts for people who get injured on our property. When they were conducting these activities under the guise of their own groups. Okay.
Well, no risk is higher. Like a one-time. A, it's a lower risk than someone who's using it regularly. Even church, I mean, that's not assuming. Not normally a super physical activity.
Yeah, I had a, I see dark church. I'm not lying, I'm not lying, I'm not lying. It's on the scare. Yes.
Do that part of all that.
So violently concerned about the ongoing rentals and there's one side that complains about breakies. Um is there people wanting to break stuff and set up an altar? And then we're gonna find storage space and we gotta, all this other stuff, which we don't have any storage space. We've already told other people they can't spread their stuff out there anymore. So. That's what I'm worried about. Um one, one, I had a renewed spaces that apparently only uses it a couple of days, but nobody else can use that room. If it's the same, the more I said, don't be here, don't be, hold on my mask, don't do any of that stuff. So restoring a little personal up there. And giving up a room, um because it was, that's what.
I mean, her, the, she uses that room one day. I mean, it's not like it can't be used for other things. I mean, as far as that room being rented out, it can be rented out. There's nothing in there. I mean, yes, she stores some stuff in where I have my baseball and softball with. And of course she has her big mats out there that are on. You know, when she's not using them, they're just pushed up against the wall. So um I mean.
So everybody's in favor of the recurring rental. If you're subject to, and just to be sure, that's small. Um okay.
And so I think the current rate, just so you know, is a hundred dollars, right?
That's what I'm charged.
And so that's for twice a week, right? So I think.
Well, she uses it twice a week.
So the church, I mean, once a week, in my, my mouth, fifty dollars.
Well, basically, for them to use the gym for four hours, it's a hundred and fifty dollars by our request on. That's what the.
Oh, that's an hour. Okay, it's right by the hours.
Yeah, so that I've already told them, it'd be a hundred and fifty dollars each time they used it.
They would have to have it shown us. Prove it. You have to, and then you show it to us file it. And you check every year, whatever.
And I did receive that from them and I'll get that to you.
Okay.
You have.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
Just a standard rate that's the same for everyone's, where we can say this position, this whoever.
Right.
We're all using the same rate hourly or whatever that is fine. And, and, and I'm asking for an insurance policy if you want it to be a recurring.
There you go. Thank everybody. It's not, yes. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Melissa?
Um.
Sure.
Positive.
All right, city crew.
What's gonna happen at this time? I'm getting training on Wednesday morning, uh on W two's. From one of the C I C people. She's gonna um run in and we're gonna hammer out W two's. Um and like just the quarterly process, meaning that I don't know, just reporting to the entities that they need to be reported to. I go, my name and processing and everything done. Um I had to do all that before payroll last week, but I don't know some of the processes, like how to do, to like the state and like federal stuff and things like that. So she can help me through that process. Um. I don't think I have much else going on. So.
All right, that's it. Dustin, you?
Yeah, a couple of things that I didn't include on Friday's report on the airport. Uh we shut down improvements for four months because we had a meeting about a month ago. Sorry, I keep forgetting to disclose that. So that's my whole. We shut it down for four months because of the weather, but all they had left to do is reduce some of the landscaping and. And to finish up the runway project, but they also. Uh Brad Waller has told me that we have, we're gonna lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we don't get our question by the end of the week this week. So the board met over the weekend and they want to build a, a, a storage shed for their snow removal, whatever, first. And then rebuild the terminal. So we're gonna think big. Their, the design concepts are, are only to set the Simmons to be effective. And um next tech, they executed the contract on Friday. Melissa and I and Kelly were in. Uh we finally got to the point where we negotiated with uh their managers and their attorney. Uh and we left with at least mutual understanding. And um we got asked the clause cancellation clause extended to sixty days. Melissa, we at least was more tolerable uh than what it was before. Correct me if my interpretations wrong, Melissa, but that. We're gonna leave, sign them on and the last with that, I was wondering, I, I wanted to request council's permission to shut down computers for a few days. For Wilson to, to uh, to do their thing. And then I also told Max that while Wilson's doing that. Next tech technician is also gonna be there to change her. I did tell all staff that they've come to work. Sorry, Kelly. What, what are you doing this? Um I have not scheduled it yet. I just wanted to get Ken's blessing. I will include a different ready report when this two days be.
All right. And I sort of, I'll push you off. Yeah, sooner the better. Um you know, we've been dealing with this since June. So every day it kind of counts. I mean, we're kind of still hanging out the window a little bit, so. You know, just let them know that. I know that they, they've never been involved in this, but we have and you know, times of the essence to get it changed over. Get something more secure. Um and I think Aaron's point. Uh we're gonna definitely do some penetration testing, hire a company at some point. And not take it for granted. We're gonna say attack the network, let's see if you can get in and we're gonna spend, you know, with your approval. What we talked about, but I think it's a fantastic idea to make sure we're safe, you know, just getting changed over and then. That'll be the next step. And just let them know that all various guys, they're making a lot of money. We want to make sure that this can't happen. Yeah, so.
You get over. Well, they were waiting on me because I wanted to make sure council signed off on this.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, um Aaron, are you still with us?
Yes. Yes, I'm still here.
Todd, you want to go first?
I have nothing.
Okay.
Wait, you have anything?
I have a couple of things. Um. One, I don't know if everybody heard, um. I'm sorry, not here. I hope he's getting better. Um. But there was a couple of guys injured in a trench cave in in Salina Friday. Putting in the water sewer line, so I want to make sure our guys. Tell us and sass, they need to take the equipment. We'll get a safety equipment map. Nobody's in such a hurry that they need to do anything without proper safety equipment placed. So.
Okay, it's a trench, trench shore in, yes, and, yeah, all that. Um.
Cause I've heard other city employees say that they don't use trench safety because their commission wants. The work done fast, so they don't have time to do all that. Well, that's BS that nobody wants them to get hurt. So um take your time, get it done right. Uh one thing was, I've had a complaint about um Wester Urbanic property at court. And I think it's second. Uh it's got a couple of truck frames that have been sitting in the frontage. Where the grass is supposed to be for months now. That's against our code, so.
So court the second?
Yeah. We'd like to do that, okay?
Thank you.
There's also a big pile of trash building up across the street from me, but they're changing over ground, so. I'm hoping that they'll all come back. So that's all I have.
Aaron should be good now. I changed this speaker.
All right, um Jessica, you have anything?
Yeah, okay.
Darcy? All right, um Aaron, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
All right. You move them to me. So talk about a couple of things here. We'll do a. Even as a kid, I hated the, you know, the president does the state of the union and all these little entities do the state of the city and it's like. Really shouldn't use that word because you're not, you're not that important. So we'll do an update. We'll go back to twenty twenty-two in the next few meetings. We'll say, here's what we did. Here's where we're successful. Here's where we're kind of going and have the mission and vision. And um you know, we'll talk about it then. Not really ready to do that at this point. We'll definitely do that. Um. I have a couple of love cats. This is something that's been around forever. Um. Kind of a, you know, a call over to say, hey, you need to do something, blah, blah, blah. I've already called these people done all this, so. Dustin's on it. I realize this has been a complicated issue with the city for a long time. Um but yeah, it's something we need to address and, and it goes back to code enforcement, maybe somebody's trained and you know, where does the. Financial uh liability fall, that type of thing. So yeah, I mean, it just never reached. You know, we're, we're dealing with cybersecurity and things of that, getting the city administrator. It hasn't reached that level of priority, but I got a call today. So remind me, yeah, that's something we need probably do. So I don't, he's done a little bit of research. We don't have any answers at this point, but. Um we'll work on it. Um. You know, I go back to the saddle club agreement. And you know, if, if, if this were a perfect world, and I think you'll agree, as soon as we put that rec center in there, right? Everybody's world was gonna change, you know? That would have been a great time to have had a first meeting, you know what I mean? For, for either the saddle or the city to come together and say, hey. Things are about to change. We didn't do that. Nobody did that. We're reactive and, and I think that would have been. You know, that's sad that that didn't happen. And, and I think the good thing is we caught this now with the county. Um looking at doing uh county fair, right? Getting a building out there. Right, we're looking at the chair such as, thank you for the great work. Right, so yeah, it's a little bit more complicated than maybe you get a court. It gets even more complicated. So you know, I wish that. When we put it in there, we would have thought ahead and say, hey, you know, this is gonna get a little complicated. And it did, you know, and so hopefully we're at that point to begin an agreement and. Create that continuity. Everybody's gonna be happy, working together, making their life a little easier, making their life a little easier too. Um someone jokingly sent me or sent my wife a, a video of some naked pickleball players. And I was like, I think one of this stuff. So I guess senior citizens are now playing pickleball naked. So we want to. Protect the saddle club and people like that. All right, so something starts to, all right, here you go. So. We want to be thinking about what, you know, what can happen to their assets too. We don't want to just be thinking about, hey, you know, right? We want to be thinking crazy stuff can happen. And I think that's the rest of it as a city to say. You know, I can tell you story after story after story. And, and, and one thing I wanted to impart on everybody as we talk about the rec center. Had a friend, not gonna tell you the city he lived in, because it's part of the longer story. He was into cycling. And we, I was too at one time. I gave it up for a lot of reasons, and this is one of the main reasons. So he's going down the street. A lady stepped out in front of him. All right, so you can imagine this, a, a man, I'm gonna say a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty pounds, went down the street. Pretty fast, he hit her, but he hit her in the way. She fell. There was brain damage. They sued the city. They sued his business. They sued him. I've never seen that man scared. And they came back around a second time. And they, they started rebounding, suing him again. And that's when he was, you know, terrified. He said, well, my gosh, what am I gonna do? And so they sued the restaurants in front of the restaurant. I, I can think from, I remember the story correctly. You know, he, he was in the right, but they sued the business that was in front. So anything they can get a hold of. And these are high-powered attorneys, you know, so he was scared. He was scared for his financial future, for his family, felt bad about it. So. Yeah, we live in a world where Elkhorn is a little bit safer from that kind of stuff than elsewhere. It is. But when people really get hurt, you can't blame them. They're gonna turn against people pretty quick. You know, they're gonna turn and, and they have to. They have to. That lady's family had to do that because now she couldn't go to work. You know, her, her family was in, you know, dire straits, so. These things can happen. So as we're talking about these incidents, you know, these, these types of things can happen. And the, and the more serious those injuries are, the more. People will turn. And that's the part I don't think people look at. There's like, oh, that one happened. This is my, hey, people get hurt that bad and they turn quickly. And she did. And I honestly thought about it over the years and I thought, you know, I can't really blame, I mean, it, it put an awful burden on that family. Total accident. He didn't see her, she didn't see him. I mean, it was tough, you know, and he was torn up and the guy's not scared of nothing. And then he was scared, I could tell. I got the calls and I was like, man, you know, this is a bad situation. This lasted for a year and a half, two years, you know, just torture for him. So. I, I like the fact you're, you're doing this, so this is, this is good. Um. Cats, the, you know, the kind of update. And then we talked about, you know, trying to get the rec center area. Um everybody kind of heading in the same direction there, so. There's a lot more next week. Stacy's gonna come in. We, we knew this meeting would be long. Let's push her back. She's got a couple of requests and really neat stuff. Um that tax, that type of thing. Um. And I think that um we'll kind of carry on this in two weeks. So if anybody else have any questions? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Uh Council Coast has made a motion to adjourn. Council Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate? All right, hearing that, all's in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you all for the long meeting.